At this time, I'd like to invite the City Council candidates to join me up here on stage and find your location on the, what is this called, a DS or a, on the panel. Your names are right in front of where you're sitting. Once again, good evening, everyone, and welcome to Ma'ami City Council Forum Night. Thank you to those that are here in person in the theater, and again, welcome to those of you that are joining us on Facebook. On behalf of the Ma'ami Chamber of Commerce, I first want to thank our candidates for their participation. Your willingness to step forward to voice your ideas and to engage in open dialogue with your fellow candidates is a testament to your dedication to our community. I also want to express appreciation to the League of Women Voters for facilitating this forum. The League has a long history of promoting civic engagement and informed voting. Their involvement tonight ensures that we have a fair and impartial platform for these candidates to express their views and ideas. And additionally, we would like to thank the Mirror newspaper for promoting this event out in the community, and to the Ma'ami Uptown Business Association for their support. Tonight's questions for the candidates come from submissions by residents. The League of Women Voters spent many hours compiling your questions into a comprehensive list that addresses the issues that are important to you. The evening's moderator is Nancy Gagne, Blade Reporter, and former president of the Ma'ami Uptown Business Association. The Ma'ami Chamber of Commerce is committed to promoting cooperation among businesses and fostering a quality environment for the citizens of Ma'ami. Tonight's forum is an opportunity to better understand the candidates' positions and their vision for Ma'ami's future. By the order that was determined by draw, I would like to introduce our candidates running for City Council. First, we have Scott Noonan, Ted Kurt, Gabe Barrow, Aubrey Hornsby, Dave Peppelmeyer, and Tracy Elmore. And now it is my pleasure to introduce Ann Fabiziak-Payne. I don't know if I got that right, Ann, I tried. Close enough. President of the League of Women Voters, who will review tonight's forum rules.
In order to keep the forum fair, we do have rules, so I will read them. We ask that all cell phones be turned off as a matter of courtesy, and remind you that unauthorized videos are not allowed. The FCC requires that a debater forum must not be edited and must be broadcast in its entirety, either live or reasonably soon after it takes place. And as Kristen said, we are live streaming this forum on both the chambers and the League's Facebook pages. This is a nonpartisan forum, and all candidates are asked to keep their literature, T-shirts, signs, buttons, advertisements, et cetera, outside the forum. We ask that the audience respect this request as well. We also ask that you not applaud a candidate's comment or response. This only takes up time and may interfere with being able to hear the information you came for. Each candidate will have the opportunity to make a two-minute opening and a two-minute closing statement. The moderator will ask questions submitted in advance, as Kristen mentioned, and tonight as well, and each candidate will have one minute to answer the question. The order of their statements has been determined by lot. No candidate has seen any of the questions prior to their being asked tonight. Each question will be asked once, but a candidate can ask to have it repeated if they need to. To keep the forum going and the timing on track, volunteers from the League sitting in front of the theater will warn the candidates of their remaining time by holding up a sign indicating how much time is left for them to use and when to stop. The candidate may finish their sentence after the stop sign is displayed. They may not finish their thought, just their sentence, and then must stop, again, to help move the forum along. As you enter the forum, you are offered index cards on which to write any question you have or that occurs to you during the forum. Questions were also submitted to the Ma'ami sponsors in advance, and we've mentioned that several times already, but we want to make sure you understand. If you need an index card, raise your arm. When you have written a question, please raise your arm so that one of the volunteers can see it and collect the card. The questions will be given to a panel of League volunteers sitting here in the front and who will, if needed, organize, consolidate, or write clearly and pass it on to the moderator. Obviously, there may be some repetitive questions, and that's what we're going to try to avoid. We will not use questions directed to one individual candidate. If you have a question like that, please try to rework it so that all candidates can answer it, or wait until the end and talk to that person in the lobby after the forum. We also will not use questions that are personal in nature. "When did you stop beating your wife, Mr. Jones?" type of question will not be asked. Finally, due to the disrespectful part of our current political climate, unfortunately, we must add that everyone is entitled to free speech and their own opinions. But in this forum, that is balanced with the right of everyone to feel safe, hear responses, and get their questions asked as well as yours. Anyone heckling or having a continuing outburst will be asked to stop. Further intrusive behavior will result in being escorted out of the room. Remember, we are filming this. The forum will end promptly at 9:00. All candidates have agreed to remain in the building until 9:45 and meet with anyone who would like to talk more with them and answer further questions. So with that, we'll get started.
We'll begin with opening statements, starting with Mr. Noonan.
My name is Scott Noonan. I'm currently on Ma'ami City Council and seeking reelection. I would like to take the time to thank the League of Women Voters, Ma'ami Chamber of Commerce, Ma'ami Uptown Business Association, and the Ma'ami Mirror for allowing me the opportunity to share my accomplishments, goals going forward, and my character overall. First off, I have been truly honored and blessed to serve the city of Ma'ami and its residents for essentially six years. In that time, my colleagues and I have navigated a variety of tough decisions, including the water agreement, the 911 consolidation, the Uptown Revitalization Plan, and guiding the city of Ma'ami through the COVID-19 pandemic. I believe the biggest accomplishments I have brought forward are being a part of six balanced budget budgets, ensuring our city is in good financial health, providing opportunities for current businesses to maintain success, and create avenues for vacant spots in our three business districts to be occupied, and elsewhere for new businesses to thrive in our city. I'm also proud to be the first council member to go through the proper channels for the need of an official Facebook page, when I noticed that we did not have a Facebook page when I was coordinating efforts for a national food drive. In addition to that, the current council and administration are working on significant improvements to provide streaming capabilities that are consistent with other municipalities in the area. Some other initiatives that I would like to move forward are to ensure the continual implementation of the Ma'ami Master Plan, in which I brought forward for unanimous vote in 2019, in which it will allow council members and the city administration to allow for a community input in the city going forward. In addition, I would also like to see the implementation of a pilot internship program for people or individuals with disabilities, in which they will lead to full-time employment within the, oh, thank you.
Mr. Kurt?
Thank you. Thank you to the League, the chamber, and the Mirror for co-sponsoring this event and giving all of us the opportunity to discuss our candidacies and what we plan to do. I was a little bit late getting here, and I don't know if anyone mentioned this before, but as I start, I would just like to just ask for a moment of silence for the victims of the conflict in the Middle East now, and also for Ukraine. My name is, my name is, whoops, my name is Ted Kurt, and I don't know how to handle a microphone here. My name is Ted Kurt. I've been a resident of Ma'ami here with my wife for 15 years now. We moved here to be closer to our daughter, our daughter, in Perrysburg. In the 15 years we've been here, I have made a lot of friends and acquaintances in Ma'ami, and it seems the last couple of years, people are asking me, "What's going on in City Hall? Why is there so much, why are there so many problems? Why is there so much tumult in City Hall?" My answer has been, "I don't know. I don't know." That's why I would like to be seated on City Council, so I could find out. And when I am seated, I think we need to, everyone talks about transparency, so that's one of my big things. We need to livestream the meetings. We need to let the citizens know ahead of time what ordinances, what resolutions are being proposed at a meeting, rather than, I think 80% of the resolutions and legislation has been done through emergency measures. And I don't know why that is, and I hope to find out in January when I'm seated. Is that a red card?
Yes.
Am I finished?
You are. Thank you, Mr.
Geez, it went fast. You're asking a lawyer to stop talking?
Thank you, Mr. Kurt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barrow?
Hi, thank you. Thank you to the Mirror, is this on? Okay. The League of Women Voters in the chamber for putting this together tonight. My name is Gabriel Barrow. I have served on City Council for four years. Jackie and I have been married for 35 years. Our children went through the Ma'ami school systems. Anthony and Gabe Jr. are serving their country at the 180 there National Guard, and Christopher is serving in the Ma'ami Police Department. All three of our sons have achieved the rank of sergeant. Jackie and I are very proud of their service to our country and our city. Our budget for the city of Ma'ami presently is $22 million. The income that we collect is separated into two separate funds, the A and the B fund. The A takes care of services and daily operations. The B fund covers larger capital projects such as tow path, major park improvements such as Ford Field, Anderson Park, pickleball courts. During my time in council, we have maintained a surplus in both of these funds. While operating within the stringent state regulations to govern our spending, we have rejuvenated our entire city, our Uptown, rather, and we have generated a large business base. Uptown began refurbishing, and our failing sewer system was imperative. This was done with a combined, with a $24 million bond that we borrowed at 1.78% interest rate. Today, they're 6% or more. At this historical low rate saving us millions of dollars in interest, this loan will be paid off completely by the center, the middle, rather, of 2025. This is what I believe is called good government. I'm the chairman of the Finance Committee, and I know the numbers. The challengers are very trying to run, the challengers, rather, are trying to run by instilling fear into our residents for personal vendetta. That is not a good quality of somebody running to represent the voters. In contrast, community service means selflessness, you represent your residents, responsive to anyone that calls, giving of your time and your talents, volunteering, making special decisions by benefiting the generations for years to come. I am for unity in our city and the community, not disunity or self-gain. Thank you. I look towards for your vote in November 7th.
Thank you, Mr. Barrow. Mr. Hornsby?
First, thank you all for being here and the opportunity. My name is Aubrey Hornsby. My family and I have lived in Ma'ami Uptown for nearly 10 years. My wife is originally from the area and dragged me back here in 2010 because she thought it would be great for our family. After 13 years, I have to agree. Our kids now in 7th grade and 9th grade have attended Ma'ami schools since kindergarten. We have enjoyed watching them grow to be young adults and believe they are receiving excellent education and upbringing in Ma'ami. We love watching our daughter cheer for junior high football. Unfortunately, I'm missing their last game of the season tonight. I hope they won, but it is for a good cause. My wife and I both work in Ma'ami. I'm running, I work in commercial business development. I'm running for council for a multitude of reasons. The main reason is, after attending many council meetings over the last year, I feel like citizens were not being heard. A lot of the stuff that could have had three or more readings and more input were passed as emergency measures. My current job has given me the opportunity to attend many of our surrounding cities' council and economic development meetings. Every city has a different way of doing things, and I feel like I can bring some of the best stuff back to Ma'ami. I have seen large and small changes take place with limited public input, and most, if not all, votes are done seven to zero or six to one. This is frustrating to me, and I think it's frustrating to a lot of you. Residents are concerned about rising costs that affect their quality of life. They are stuck paying more for water, sewer, and now potential new levy. I want to be the voice of this community that it desperately needs. We need to bring back livestreaming, citizen committees, more time and eyes on these ordinances, less emergency measures, and monthly or quarterly town hall meetings. I am highly supportive of helping our businesses, aiding first responders, private property rights, and free enterprise. Plus, if I make a mistake, let's change direction, start over, and try again. I won't get offended, or angry, or dig my heels in deeper. Again, my choices should be based on what you, the community, wants as a whole. If you feel the same way, please vote for me in November.
Thank you, Mr. Hornsby. Mr. Peppelmeyer?
Thank you for saying my name right. That's awesome. All right. So, hello, everyone. I'm Dave Peppelmeyer. A quick introduction. My wife, Michelle, and I have been residents of Ma'ami for 10 years. We have three kids that go to Ma'ami schools. We are both proud graduates of the University of Toledo, and I was a physical therapist for 20 years prior to changing careers to real estate in December of 2020. We own 22 rental properties around the University of Toledo to give college kids a nice place to live, and I work with people from all over the world who buy rental properties in Toledo. So why am I running for City Council? It's no secret that as an expert in the real estate industry, I was very opposed to the rental ordinance that was passed earlier this year. That issue is what brought my focus to what was happening in Ma'ami. Prior to that, I was like most everyone else, head down, working hard in a new profession, managing our rental properties, being a dad, and not really paying attention. However, I knew that I needed to get up to speed quickly, so I attended every meeting I could go to, including City Council meetings and various committee and municipal planning meetings. I met with Jennifer Harkey, our finance director, to discuss how our city finances work. I began attending community events with the Ma'ami Chamber of Commerce and was introduced to the Exchange Club of Ma'ami, and I became members of both. What I discovered was there is a whole world of community service outside my comfort zone that I enjoy. I feel that I can truly be an asset on City Council with my background in healthcare, as well as real estate and business. Ma'ami is changing, and as an individual, I feel that I would bring more proactive communication to the citizens of Ma'ami on these major issues. I want to be involved in our finance and business development to help ensure that Ma'ami is on solid financial footing for the future, but most importantly, I want to do what I've been doing my entire life. I want to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Elmore?
Thank you, Nancy. I am both honored and humbled to be sitting here before all of you and given the opportunity to answer your questions and for you to get to know me. My name is Tracy Elmore, and I am a lifelong resident who, along with my husband, Mark, and three children, are proud Ma'ami High School graduates. My background is in finance, accounts receivable management, investing, and real estate. I am currently the citizen representative on the JEDS board, finance chair at my church, a billing and credentialing manager at Lutheran Social Services, and a responsible landlord of two rental properties. I previously served in 2017 after being appointed by the council, and then was elected five months later for a four-year term. I served on several committees and am proud of the work I accomplished, including the formation of the city Facebook page, because I was the chair of Public Information, the upgrading of the city website, creating a three-year park maintenance and replacement program, and pressuring TARDA to consider Ma'ami more favorably in their new sales tax-funded model before it was voted on by the public. My unplanned departure from council in January of '22 provided me the opportunity to take a step back from political life, care for my elderly mother, and gain a fresh perspective on the issues facing the residents of Ma'ami. And although I didn't plan initially on returning to elected office, several citizens approached me and asked me to get back on council, missing my steady and respectful approach to problem-solving, as well as my emphasis on public engagement and fiscal responsibility. And it is for these reasons that I became inspired and decided to pick up where I left off. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, the Ma'ami Chamber, the Ma'ami Uptown Business Association, and the Mirror for hosting this event, and I look forward to an insightful and informative evening that will hopefully provide clarity on the issues most important to you. Thank you.
All right. All right, very nice. Thank you so much for your opening statements. And Scott, you chose lucky number one, so you're going to be the first one to answer the question. And as was stated earlier, I will read the question once, but if you need me to read it again, I'll be happy to, so just let me know. Okay, ready? What training or experience has prepared you to be a member of Ma'ami City Council?
What training or experience, is that what you said?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So in addition to the serving on council, I would say the additional training or experience would be, I've served on a variety of boards and commissions, either prior to serving on City Council or even during City Council as of right now. In addition to serving on City Council, I've served on the Toledo-Lucas County Commission on Disabilities, the TMACAG, the Board of Community Relations for the City of Toledo, the, and obviously, the City of Ma'ami ADA Commission, the, oh, I previously served on the Lucas County Board of Developmental Disabilities. So all of those things, in addition to being on City Council, I think have yielded my, had led to my experience in overseeing budgets, looking at initiatives, how we prioritize things. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kurt?
Same question?
Same question, sir.
I am a retired lawyer. I've been a lawyer for going on 45 years. I spent most of my career as general counsel, in-house lawyer at Mercy Hospital, former Mercy Hospital, and St. Charles Hospital. As such, I was responsible for, I guess, mediating or understanding disputes between all kinds of different constituents, the hospital administration, the board, physicians, patients, patients' families. Every day, there was some kind of a new issue going on between one or two or more of those groups. Is there a doctor in the house? Because trying to manage doctors, especially when there's a dispute, I deserve a big medal. They didn't give me one when I retired, but it was very, very difficult, but I was extremely successful in doing so, and I can bring that experience and those battle scars with me to City Council in January. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Barrow?
Thank you. I've been in business for four to six years. At Barrow's Jewelers, we've been located in the same spot. We're a five-star rated jewelry store on Facebook, the internet, Google, and all that. Running your own business four to six years teaches you a lot. We had to learn about land acquisitions, leases, I'm a landlord, rentals, repairs, things that go along with all of that, tax complaints when the county says your place is worth more. We know how to handle that. We know what to do and how to do it with sometimes when the economy is good and when it's bad. I was a chairman on our endowment committee for our church for years. Paid for my own medical health care for 46 years, and it's a lot, and I understand when we talk about all these issues about people having to pay for health care towards the health care. So I'm pretty rounded. I'm really fortunate that a lot that I've done really blends in well with running a city. The city is a much bigger business. Thank you.
Mr. Hornsby?
Thank you. So I've been in business development for the last eight years. That's led me to go to many of the surrounding municipality council meetings and economic development meetings. I talk to people that develop and do business every single day in and around the area. I'm on numerous boards and committees that help develop business to Good Grief, Zoo to Do, you name it. I know business, and I know financials. I've operated a business with my wife for the last 10 years, so I know what you need to do to prepare the community and the economy for what's going to happen in the future. Again, I have strong relationships with all the local municipalities. I know the people that want to do business here in Ma'ami and want to develop here in Ma'ami. Thank you.
Mr. Peppelmeyer?
Thank you. So there's two main areas where I think I'm going to be able to absolutely help. One of them, like Gabe and Aubrey have said, is with finance. I mean, running 22 college rental properties around the university with 19 and 20 and 20-year-old shenanigans is interesting sometimes. And so, no, I mean, but you have to, you have to know how to run a budget, you know, when it comes to making improvements to these houses. You know, I'd love to fix everything and anything, but we can't. So we have to know what our income coming in, what our expenditure is going out, and that's going to translate to the city. But the biggest thing is my experience in health care is doing patient care for 20 years. And so basically, all I have done my entire career is communicate, communicating with doctors, with nurses, with my patients, telling people their mom's not going to walk again. That's not fun. And, you know, there are hard decisions to be made on City Council, and not everyone is going to like what you do, but thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Elmore?
Thank you, Nancy. I come to the table with prior experience both on council and in the private sector. As I stated before, I was on council for four and a half years, where I served on several council committees. I've also served on committees at work and at church. I'm the current council, or finance chair at my church. I've also been a fundraiser for Make-A-Wish for 19 years, where I've had to network and deal with putting on an event, and that is a lot of work. I've also been the accounts manager and been headhunted for accounts receivable management for surgi care, for physician offices, small businesses, and for my nonprofit at Lutheran Social Services. Again, my experience is in finance, real estate, investing, and I believe these attributes are definitely needed at the city level. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? All right. All right, Mr. Kurt, you're going to start this next question. Are you ready?
I am.
Okay. Concerns have been expressed over a lack of transparency by elected officials. Residents have also expressed concerns about the rumors, misinformation, and disinformation that spreads quickly on social media. If elected, how will you keep residents accurately informed about city council business?
I would insist that we restore the, during the pandemic, council meetings were livestreamed. I don't know why it stopped, but I would insist that we restore that practice, because anybody can get on their laptop or their television and watch the meeting. In addition to that, I would insist that we limit the use of emergency measures. As I said earlier, 80% of legislation in the last, since January, has been passed as emergency measures. I think that's too high. I think that's too high. When I get on council, you know, maybe there's a good reason for it, but 80%, that's awfully high. These initiatives need to be posted as required by the charter. I think they require three meetings and posted in five conspicuous places. The people of Ma'ami, all of you and the rest of the people in Ma'ami, need to see what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barrow?
Yeah, thank you. Transparency, that's been a theme with a lot of the people running. We did livestream when COVID hit, and the problem was our system is so old and antiquated, you couldn't hear. Time was lagged when you were trying to listen to a response, and that was a terrible thing. We were actually on our cell phones trying to communicate. As far as emergency measures go, this has been explained As far as emergency measures go, this has been explained effortlessly to a lot of people here today. We do emergencies for a lot of reasons, but just to let you know, in 2019, we had 243 emergency ordinance passed. Today, we're going to be about 30 to date so far. So emergencies are done for a lot of reasons. Typically, a lot of these were done because we weren't, our books weren't up to the state and state codes that we had to bring them into line with that. We waived the three regulations and making emergencies so we can be in compliance with that. We have had a lot of communication with people. People want us to have more and see more. This is the first time in the history of Maumee that people seem to be very interested in something, but that's for another minute. Thank you.
So yes, this is basically my entire agenda. Livestreaming of the city council and recording for everyone to see. Technology has changed since 2019. There's a lot of different options out there, and I think we can afford to upgrade our systems to improve live streaming so people who can't make it can actually see what's happening. Get ordinance information one to two weeks in advance. This is important. We need more eyes and more time on those ordinances so people can actually provide input and maybe some advice that we didn't even think about. Monthly and quarterly town hall, monthly to quarterly town hall meetings. Look, I get it. Going to council and having only three minutes to talk can be nerve-wracking, so let's give the community an opportunity to talk to us all. Less emergency measures and citizen committees. But going back to less emergency measures, if I have the time, I want to help explain things a little bit better that the council's voting on. No more abbreviations or jargon that only a few people know. We need to be able to explain to the community what we're voting on and why, and they need to understand fully before that decision is made.
Thank you. Mr. Peppelmeyer?
Thank you. I completely echo the livestreaming 2023. It should not be that hard. But the biggest thing, like I mentioned in my opening statements, is more proactive communication. So when it comes to major city-altering ideas and projects, there's really, you know, there's no reason why we can't get out ahead of things more. And like Aubrey said, you know, have a town hall meeting instead of just enacting an ordinance and then tweet two weeks later saying, here's what we did and here's how awesome it is. And just like the fire department put out a nice mailer, I think that the city should do that more often because not everybody's on social media, not everybody subscribes to the blade. And so if you have that in front of you, you're going to be more informed and your radar can go up and, you know, and if you have an opinion for or against something coming down the road, I want the city to really be in front of that a lot better.
Thank you. Ms. Elmore?
Thank you. This echoes what my campaign promise was back in 2017 when I ran, was public information and public engagement. And that was what springboarded my, I spearheaded the city Facebook page and also wanted to overhaul the city website. I believe the answer is at the city website, where all the information should be, should be easily obtainable. We also need to include an FAQ section, which is a frequently asked questions section. We see all the questions on social media, and those should be addressed in a civil and very unemotional way on the city Facebook page, and it should not have city staff debating issues on Facebook on the Maumee residents' side. We also need to livestream, and I also agree with, there should be regular meetings with the public on different subjects. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barrow, you're up?
Mr. Noonan?
No, we already did, Scott. No, we didn't.
Am I able to go, Nancy?
Okay. So Mr. Noonan?
Thank you.
What? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. So I just wanted to say that since I've been on council, I think the city has done a variety of things to disseminate more info to the information. The streaming capability was a little wonky. Sometimes we were starting meetings 15 minutes later than what it should have been because the technology was inadequate. So just to let everybody know, the city is currently working on a robust plan to incorporate a streaming capabilities in our city council chambers in order to have the streaming and to disseminate that information publicly. We also have revamped our website, you know, where we have our packets online, and, you know, we have other ordinances that are also available as well. In addition, as far as transparency, you know, when we talk about emergency measures, I just want everybody to know and understand that emergency measures are a consistent thing that every municipality operates on in the entirety of the state of Ohio. Emergency measures are something that is in every municipality. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Barrow, sorry about that. Maumee has expended a significant amount of funds to revitalize the Uptown area. What would be done to improve the appearance of the non-Uptown neighborhoods, including broken curbs, deteriorating sidewalks, dead trees between streets and sidewalks, congested storm drains, et cetera?
All that in a minute. Boy, okay. Yeah. Uptown, we have a plan coming 2024 to repave our alleys. The streets are, of course, part of the project. We have a tree program now with the Environmental Commission, which I co-chair with Councilwoman Puffenberger. First year, we planted 1,500 trees. Our tree canopy is down over 30%. So when you see all these trees popping up, that is why, that's the reason why. Repeat that question again, there were so many things.
Oh, sure. What will be done to improve the appearance of the non-Uptown neighborhoods, including broken curbs, deteriorating sidewalks, dead trees, congested storm drains, et cetera?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The storm drain issue is a biggie. That's something that was hidden from Maumee for years and years. In 1996, the city sent a letter to the EPA that said we had disconnected and got rid of our sewer pumpings. We're not pumping into the river anymore. Totally untrue. We've been running rapid and got, had to self-report to the EPA, and we have done a miraculous turnaround on what we have done. We're relining sewers, which is a very expensive endeavor. We spent $3.5 million this past year doing so. We've made great improvements, like I said, and things are really shaping up quickly. The EPA is very happy with what we've done. As far as the sidewalks and the street skulls, those always are within our budget, and we have to see what we're, where we're at with the expenses we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hornsby?
So initially, I probably would have taken the funds that we got to do the Uptown project and put that towards the type of projects that you mentioned in your question there, but since that money is already spent and we are, that's what we have now, and it's going to look great, but I think there could have been, I think the money could have been put to better projects around Maumee. So how do we fix it going forward? I think citizen committees, experts that know how to do this type of thing can absolutely help with these types of decisions. I think you have to plan ahead. I mean, roads need to be repaired every 10 years in Ohio. It's like every five years, apparently. But same with the sewer systems. They need to be repaired every 20 to 50 years, apparently. So if we can plan ahead and put that money aside now and get ready for it, then we won't have these issues when we get there in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peppelmeyer?
Thank you. So basically, the biggest question is, what's the budget? And so we have to work within budgets, and obviously, we have done a marvelous job in making Uptown look better. And so, yeah, so now it's time to turn attention to other areas in Maumee. Case in point is West Wayne Street in front of St. Joe Cemetery. We have lived here 10 years, and that road has been a tank trail the entire time. And so that's where, yes, we need, we need input from the citizens as to, you know, truly where are the trouble spots? And so roads are one thing, curbs, obviously, you know, that goes with the roads. The sidewalks is another, another issue that's been brought up to me a lot when I've been, you know, talking to people door-to-door. And so, yeah, so the question is, is it the, is it the property owner's responsibility or is it the city's? And I think we all know that there's a lot of people in Maumee right now that can't afford to drop thousands of dollars on a new sidewalk, but it's needed. So how do we help people replace sidewalks to the benefit of everybody?
Thank you. Ms. Elmore?
Thank you. Currently, I live on an unimproved street where it's a melon fill every three to five years, so I completely get it. Again, we have no sidewalks on our street. I live on the Crystal Michigan 7th Street neighborhood, and there are homes that have sidewalks. You go one home, it doesn't have a sidewalk, and then it has a sidewalk again. But most of these issues should be on a scheduled maintenance plan. They should be budgeted for well ahead of time. If they haven't been, then you need to hold your finance committee accountable. Speaking of committees, our committees used to be 13 in number, and although that most of those committees, well, some of those committees weren't utilized very well, I believe that we should have six of those committees reinstated, with one of them being Streets, Public Services, and Utilities, and this issue would be addressed. And committees are great because they include citizens in them, and you're not limited to three minutes. And wouldn't it be nice to voice your concerns without a three-minute limit? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Noonan?
Thank you. In response to this question, we already have the Environmental and Tree Commission that kind of looks at what trees, certain trees need to be addressed and how they're laid out. I think the city is doing a phenomenal, phenomenal job in that. I think the smartest thing that we did was putting a bunch of trees along 7th Street to act as a noise barrier and also a, you know, preventative, preventative accident barrier. The sidewalks, someone already noted. One key example, I think we're doing a good job with sidewalks, is the Wayne Street project that is going, leading up to the cemetery. So people in wheelchairs are able to be on that sidewalk leading out, leading into the cemetery. So I thought that was a phenomenal thing. And overall, I think, you know, to approach this, again, as I mentioned earlier, there is a master plan that actually, as of we're speaking today, a request for proposal has been issued to, to find a reputable firm, excuse me. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Kurt?
I live over here on West Dudley. I don't know where that is here, but I have not noticed any, any structural-type problems that you mentioned in the, in the question. There are problems over some of the sidewalks. Some of the sidewalks are raised too high from one block to the next. I think instead of spending money to widen sidewalks four or five feet or whatever the new sidewalk width is, we should be taking that money and fixing the sidewalks we already have. Thank you. Fixing the sidewalks we already have. I'm satisfied that when the curbs are deteriorating and so forth, that the city gets out there on a timely basis and repairs them. I don't, but, you know, as I said, I don't see any problem, at least on West Dudley, and I walk all around here all the time, with any of the structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Hornsby? In November, if voters again turn down the property tax levy, which is being requested to provide an additional $3 million in funding for firefighter and paramedics, what alternative course of action will you champion to raise the funds necessary to restructure Maumee's Fire and EMS Department?
A tough one. All right. So it was already voted down, the community's already spoken, and I want to be a voice for the community, but how do we move forward? And that's a complicated question. First, I would have to get into the budget and see what's actually happening and what we need to do with the money that we currently have. And can we do that with potentially a vote to change our charter? Maybe there's an opportunity to increase income tax rather than property tax. A lot of people are scared about their property taxes increasing. I've talked to several people who are already worried about their water bill each and every quarter. We cannot do something without explaining to the community what we're going to do and that we've taken every necessary step to inform you and fix the problem before we go after your pockets. So I think maybe a committee could be an option for that. I think income tax could be an option for that. Our community almost doubles every single day. So there's different options I think we can jump on before we say this is going to be on you guys.
Thank you. Mr. Peppelmeyer?
Yes, so I will be the first one to say that we absolutely need a full-time fire department. Again, my experience in health care, burnout is a real thing, and from talking to members of our fire department, that's where they are. And so if, so if it fails this fall, I absolutely still want a hybrid property tax, income tax solution. And so I know it's been brought to the city before and has been, you know, dismissed, but when speaking with Jennifer Harkey, I asked, you know, can we have another income tax and the property tax just go towards the fire department? Because that's one thing that people have been, been saying, is I don't want it to go into the general coffers. And she said, yes, we can absolutely make a C-fund for this income tax to go into, to go directly to the fire department. So I, something has to be done, and I really don't want to start making staffing cuts because I have been there as a health care provider.
Thank you. Ms. Elmore?
Thank you. I agree that the, the status of the fire department over the past 10 years, we should have been planning ahead for full-time positions. When I was on council, I was taught and told by the city administration that it was too expensive and we can't do it. Well, then, we should have been planning for it in the future and budgeting for it and setting it aside, but that was not done. As far as the funding model, I believe in creative planning, and I believe that this is something that the community should all put together, whether it's a property or an income tax or the tax credit paid to another municipality. Maybe we oughtn't to give it 100% credit. Maybe we ought to take back some of that. So if you live in Maumee but you work in Toledo or somewhere else, maybe you don't get 100% credit on it. Maybe you only get 50%. So I think there's a definite idea where we can do a hybrid funding model for that.
Thank you. Mr. Noonan?
All right, thank you. So number one, you know, all this talk about, you know, doing hybrid options, you know, or, excuse me, income tax and what have you. We have a phenomenal finance department that suggested this is the way to go. So I stand behind those individuals and their proper assessment and how to go forward with this. And the reason why is, number one, we can't just reallocate $3 million into another portion, you know, into the fire department, because if you do that, that sacrifices services, our other services in which we held dear. Changing the charter to transfer the funds, the city of Toledo already does that, and guess what? They're already asking for $500 million for improvements on their water distribution plant. So that doesn't work. And raising income tax is probably our only viable solution, and I'm telling you right now, that's not business-friendly. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kurt?
I don't know enough about how the, excuse me, how the fire department is financed. And after seeing the chief's slides here an hour ago, I wrote a note to myself to make an appointment to sit down and talk to him to see, to figure out a solution to this problem if the levy is not successful, because, you know, his statistics on, on response times are going to increase and laying off, laying off responders and paramedics and so forth. We can't do that. I understand we may have to do that, but that's not the way to go. As Dave was saying, as a health care provider, it's so very important to have these people employed by the fire department so they can respond and take care of. I've had, I've seen them respond to my neighbor was having a problem, and, boy, these people are really, really professional.
Thank you.
But I'll talk to the chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barrow?
Thank you. We've been looking at this issue for quite a while. We're possibly looking at partnering, partnering with Monclova. We can't count on the county. 9/11 went sour. We just didn't have any control over that. We lost that. What people may not realize, if you work in the city of Maumee, you pay income tax. If you're retired or work outside of the city, you pay zero income tax. You'll pay only your property tax. So if your house is worth about $150,000, the city of Maumee, for everything they do for you, gets about $135. So we do have to come up another idea. If we do the income tax... If we do the income tax in other municipalities, like Mr. Noonan was alluding to, they can take that. It can't, it wasn't earmarked for that specific use. So we have to come up with a better plan for it. We're working hard for this. We're trying to figure out what to do and how to do it. I think the levy, last time, you know, it's not popular when you have to pay more money for something, but realistically, you're in a city of Maumee, and we have to protect our own. Our first concern as council people are, how are we going to keep things safe for our citizens? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next question, Mr. Peppelmeyer. The city of Maumee has undertaken a massive upgrade project to address problems related to its outdated water and sewer infrastructure system. What type of funding mechanisms would you support to pay for the needed changes?
Yeah, that's not an easy one. So, yeah, so just, the city is not new, and so, yes, the sewers have been deteriorating for years. Again, kind of going back to owning rental properties, I've replaced a lot of sewers, going from a house to a street. It's not fun. And so, so, yeah, so when it comes to funding, again, you know, I think just from the outside looking in, you know, I definitely want to sit down with the finances and see, you know, what money do we have coming in? And is this an issue that where, do we have to divert some funds from, let's say, some parks for a few years to fix the sewers and the water and to make sure that the city literally functions? You know, there's function, and then there is making Maumee look great. We need both, but we definitely need to find that balance into making sure things work instead of just looking awesome.
Thank you.
Would you mind reading the question again, Nancy?
Absolutely. The city of Maumee has undertaken a massive upgrade project to address problems related to its outdated water and sewer infrastructure system. What type of funding mechanisms would you support to pay for the needed changes?
Well, our city charter pretty much limits us, that the funds we have to use for the water sewer upgrades have to be, come from the water and sewer fund. And the only way you can get money into the water sewer fund is paying your water bill. I was sorely disappointed when I was on council to know that the funding for the aging infrastructure was not budgeted by city council and the staff. We knew back in 2000 that we probably should be spending the next 20 years building up that fund, and we did not raise the rates incrementally like we should have been. Instead, we played catch-up, and you guys got the wake-up call, the mortgage balloon payment, basically, three years ago, and we're getting hit with it now. So the funding mechanism is already there. However, fine, council and staff need to fine-tune it and make sure that it's done incrementally and safely and according to city charter.
Thank you. Mr. Noonan?
Sorry about that. Thank you. So, you know, obviously, the city, since my time, we've been approached with a new water agreement and the sewer upgrades based on the EPA issue. So there was no really wait-and-see and see what our finances are. We had to make tough decisions right then and there. And that did lead into water and sewer increases for every property, whether it's residential or commercial. So we had to make those tough decisions because we had no idea what the amounts was going to be needed in order to do those sewer upgrades and to, obviously, we know what's the rates are for the upcoming water agreement, but we had to make those decisions right then and there. I'm telling you right now, please be assured that the current administration, you know, obviously, has identified, and the city council, has identified those problems. They're seeking out ways to financially fund them through the water and sewer funds, but we also need a reserve just in case a water main, just, excuse me, just in case a water main breaks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kurt?
Thank you. My wife was talking to our sister-in-law a couple of months ago about our water bill. Mary explained to our sister-in-law that, you know, this big sewage problem, the EPA came in, and now we have to spend $100 million to repair it and so forth. And she said, well, why is your water bill going up? Maumee should pay for that. Well, yeah, Maumee should pay for it. But who's Maumee? You know, Maumee is Gabe, I don't mean Councilman Gabe, but Scott and all of us, necessarily, our water bills had to go up. And that's where the money comes from. We can't just wave a magic wand or shake a money tree to get money to do that. Unfortunately, the water bills had to go up to pay for this. But as Scott said, we need to also build in there some kind of a reserve in case something happens again, and we're ready for it, some kind of a sinking fund. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kurt and Mr. Noonan are exactly right. We had a very big disconnect ahead for years in a lot of our service departments between the people doing the work, the people instructing the people to do the work, and their, the chain of command. There was no chain of command. People kind of ran their own departments how they saw fit. We had a big, big disconnect there. For decades, we were not charging enough for the water bill or even to refine the water with the county. So what we're looking at is, when I got on council in 2020, they had $78 in the end of the funds that takes care of servicing the sewers, $78. So these increases we had to have, we're paying for the water simply to get it to your house and refining it. We approximated it's two cents a gallon to bring the water to your house, just do what you want to do with it and get rid of it. We were paying nearly the same as Perrysburg and less than Waterville. We have minimum requirements because what people don't understand is, they say, well, I don't use much water. Why should I be charged for that? We have to say this is the city of Maumee. You live here, and if this person doesn't want water, use water. We still have to get it around the circle. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hornsby?
Yeah, so, yeah, so to me, this is a lack of planning ahead. Anyone who owns a business has to plan for future costs and issues. If you don't, you shut down or you pass those costs on to your clients. And in our case, the clients happen to be the Maumee citizens. My goal is if I get on the council and I see an issue, right away, I'm going to bring it to everyone's attention so we can address it immediately as a community. Again, voice of the community, transparency, those are important to me. From what I understand, Maumee is paying more than any other municipality in the area by 12 or 25 dollars. I don't know why that is. I would have to get on council to find that out. I'm not an expert in that yet, but I hope to be soon. But my goal is to communicate with you, the citizens, what's going on and how we want to fix it. And if we don't like it, like I said, we try a different method.
Thank you. Okay. Tracy, Ms. Elmore? This is a two-part economic development question. What role should the city council play in attracting new businesses to Maumee? And should taxpayer dollars be used to purchase vacant buildings so they can be redeveloped and sold to a new business for the purpose of economic development?
So the role of city council in attracting economic development is huge. I've always said that income tax is the bread and butter of Maumee. I mean, we double in size when we come Monday through Friday. And as we've already learned, it's the income tax that funds our fire department, funds our city operations. Certainly doesn't fund it from our property taxes. If you pay $200 a year in property taxes, that's probably about average. So as far as buying vacant buildings and fixing them up, I think it's the role of city council to, first of all, market those buildings to prospective buyers, make sure that they want to invest in Maumee. You attract them with the city services we have, the people that we have, the atmosphere, and that they will be supported. Very rarely would you need to buy a property and fix it up, as we have done with the Citizens Bank uptown. That was, I think that was an anomaly, only because we have a lack of a master plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Noonan?
Thank you. I think the role of city council when it comes to economic development is a variety of ways. There's job grants in order to, you know, either help new businesses or current businesses, you know, recruit employees. So that's one way we can help out. Another way is to help pitch in for certain requests from a business district. Most recently, we helped to contribute towards a sign for the Arrowhead Park District. That goes a long way to show that the city of Maumee is committed to our business districts because, again, as I mentioned before, you know, my goal on council is to help all three of our business districts, you know, provide businesses to occupy the vacant spots that they already have, because we're technically landlocked. So I think that's a variety of ways that we can help businesses out that current or in recurring new ones. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Concerning attracting new business, when I was, I went on the internet the other day to get ready for this tonight, and I found a publication by the Arrowhead Development Something. It was a printed material that was extreme, looked extremely, would be extremely effective in encouraging businesses to, encouraging more commerce to come to Maumee. As I walked up and down Conan Street the last several weeks, I get a few complaints about the fact that the road construction has cut into their business. Well, we owe it. We owe it to those merchants to do something to let the world know Maumee is open for business, whether it's existing merchants like Dale's, he's been around there forever, or attracting new businesses. Maumee is open for business, whether it's Uptown or Arrowhead or the other business districts. Thank you.
Thank you. The role of economic development with council is huge. I've been lucky enough to see a lot of it happen from people buying and investing and why they're coming here. It starts, though, with a master plan. The revitalization of our Uptown and the infrastructure upgrades we had to do has attracted a lot of business, a lot of activity. We're a city that people want to come to. Since 2020 to present, we have had 100 businesses either reinvest largely in Maumee, present people rebuilding, if like on Conan Street, you see Kentucky Fried Chicken, Burger King, Wendy's, or side crossing, over $100 million there alone. More and more people are coming to this city. But it's because we had a vision, we are attracting people. That's what the $24 million went towards, was revitalizing infrastructure. This is why they're coming. If we put sidewalks up and we do these other things, which is a great idea, but we don't have people to live here, this is what we're doing. We have 185 apartment units that are up and running, almost completed. We have another 400 to 500 that are under contract to be built. We're going to have approximately 1,600 new members in Maumee in the, within the next two to three years. Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, my job is business development. I work with a lot of surrounding economic development organizations that try to bring business to the greater Toledo area. And they are eager to work with any municipality if they find a company that can't open up in their specific area. So I know those people, and I want to have those conversations. I also have a strong relationship with the regional growth partners who work very hard at bringing businesses here every single day. I do want to point out that I want to make it easier for permitting because it needs to be safe, it needs to be reasonable, and it needs to be timely. People are frustrated right now with the current permitting situation in Maumee. They don't feel like it's easy. I've asked a few, I've asked a few that said, if I had to do it again, I wouldn't. We need to make, we're getting them here, but they need to stay happy when they get here. So I think that's an important part of what we do. We bring them here, we keep them here, but we make sure it's easy for them to actually develop and bring their businesses to Maumee, because the word will spread.
Thank you.
All right. So I guess, you know, one of the biggest questions I have, again, going back to transparency, is, so, yeah, so the city bought the old Capital Bank building, looks fantastic, but I guess, again, you know, where are the numbers behind that building? So, and I'm sure we can get to it, but you have to dig really hard to find these figures. And so if the city is making a few bucks on this and it's going to work out in the end, okay, great, but I really don't think that the city should be in the business of business. And so when it comes to the projects like the Fondue Restaurant, you know, it's just, you know, I think it's a, obviously, it's huge that the city council is helping facilitate business in Maumee. But I would like to see the city facilitate, you know, more from the sidelines and let capitalism do its thing. And so, just really, and so, thanks. And so, but no, just, you know, facilitate, you know, make sure the structures are going in correctly. That's why we have codes, that's why we have, you know, regulations, but let's help them, but let's get out of the way.
Thank you. We're around the horn. So we're back to you, Mr. Noonan. The next question. The rental property ordinance requires rental properties to be inspected every three years and repairs made if the property does not meet state code. This ordinance has become a hot-button issue. What is your position on the rental property ordinance?
Thank you. So my position on this rental ordinance is, I'm definitely for it for a variety of reasons. I am all for ensuring that all of our properties are in good condition, which because it all around increases the value of all the properties around them. In addition, the ordinance also protects tenants and their living conditions. Right now, there are numerous properties that are owned and maintained from out-of-state renter landlords. At the very least, upon my research, these properties owners are from Honolulu, Hawaii, Belvidere, Illinois, Adrian, Michigan, Virginia, Texas, among others. And the reason why I mention those are those are out-of-state property owners that may not have the best interest in upkeeping those properties. Therefore, I think this property, excuse me, this rental ordinance is a good thing to address those out-of-state property owners. These are properties that are looking to ensure that all of our properties are up to code. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the rental ordinance was an effort to fix something that wasn't broken. There was a lot of talk about we need to control the blight and irresponsible landlords and so forth. I haven't seen any blight. I really haven't. If there's blight, I'd like to know about it, and I'd like to see where it is. In terms of responsible landlords or irresponsible landlords, I spoke with somebody over at the municipal court concerning rent escrows. That's a device where a tenant can put their rent in escrow until the landlord gets in there and fixes something. In the last 10 years, there have been five applications for rent escrows. That's one every two years. And that tells me that we have responsible landlords here in Maumee. It's, you know, mostly responsible landlords here in Maumee, whether they're out of town. I think that out of town Hawaiian landlords from Hawaii ought to have a local agent, but I think we went too far with the rental ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barrow?
Thank you. The objective for this ordinance is to make sure that Maumee residents are safe first and foremost. Permit and inspection is how we achieve the goals. It's $165 that carries you for four years. The first time, if you pass the first inspection, you're good for the four years to go. The only difference is we're requiring a registration. We have no idea really how many rentals are in Maumee. So this ordinance helps to ensure a healthy housing inventory, and it keeps your property values up, folks. Houses in good condition sell for more money, a fixer-up sells for less, rents for less, impacting your private home and those around it. It's like a spreading disease and it's hard to stop. Registration and inspection requirements are used successfully through the city of, I'm sorry, through the different states, especially Ohio. We have realized that it's so important, a tool for this to keep our city housing from slipping into a state of disrepair. As a first-rank suburb to a city who has a gun violence problem, Maumee must be proactive. It's not just about blight or somebody left their garbage cans out or the place needs siding. It's making things, making sure that the places rented out are safe for everybody around. Thank you.
Thank you.
So my feelings on the rental ordinance are this. It's, I think it needs to be redone or done away with. It's way too wordy and cumbersome. We're dealing with a 40-page-plus document ordinance that tries to, tries to change everything about your property. I believe in property rights and the Fourth Amendment. I know this administration looks at it as a business, and it is, but these are people's homes, and they shouldn't have the right to just walk in at any time. As a property owner, I know you have to give 24-hour notice before you do something like that, and this ordinance allows them to just go in and do whatever they want. before you do something like that. And this ordinance allows them to just go in and do whatever they want. I think as a council, we can create committees that specifically help homeowners and renters protect themselves. There's a lot of options out there and we can provide that information to our renters if they're having issues. There's all kinds of support that we can provide. It's just our job to explain it to them and help them any way we can.
Thank you.
Are we on? There we go. Okay. So actually, I like Ted's information about rent escrows and that five people have done it in a long time. This is what I do for a living every day. And when it comes to buying rental properties and maintaining rental properties, Maumee is very hard to have rental properties in because if you've looked around, our home values have gone up, which yay, is a good thing. But you can't be a slumlord in Maumee. It doesn't work. So when it comes to how much you purchase a house for, how much you're going to get for rent, you know, no one's going to live in a lousy house in Maumee. People want to live in Maumee for the same reasons that we're all here. It's a fantastic community. We have great schools. It's safe and that's what people want. So when it comes to, you know, protecting our tenants, yes, of course, we're protecting them. We're giving them good houses. And if they don't have a good house, there are several places that they can report that to. And through Ohio and city codes already, those issues can be addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back when this issue was raised in January, I went right to city council, the city administration, and came up with my own ideas for what a rental ordinance should look like. First of all, it shouldn't be punitive in nature if you have a couple of bad landlords. It basically wraps all the landlords into one group and says you are bad. So then you have to, it's, you're innocent or you're guilty until you're proven innocent. Blight, I believe, can be addressed with current codes. And your property values, I think we take care of our rental properties here in Maumee. I think our values are great. What about the owner occupied properties that suck the rental or the property values right out of Maumee? Aren't the current codes addressing those? And some have accused me, since I'm a landlord of a single property home in, here in Maumee, that I'm getting on council just to get something out of it, and that is farthest from the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Kurt, we're going to start with you. This is a rather long question, so hang in there. Ohio's ethics law prohibits public officials from participating in any way in the actions or decisions that directly involve their own financial interests or those of their families or business associates. In other words, as an elected official, you by law would have to abstain in those situations due to a conflict of interest. In accordance with Ohio Ethics Law, will you be required to abstain from taking any action on legislation as it regards rental properties due to a conflict of interest? Why or why not?
You're asking a lawyer to talk about ethics. Most of us are ethical, by the way, right, Sue? I don't know where I can't see, especially your husband. Anyway, I, yes, absolutely. If I identify an ordinance that's up or a resolution or something that's up for vote, and I feel I have a personal interest, then I would abstain, I would abstain from participating in that vote. Now newly elected officials are required by the, I think by the Secretary of State, to take an ethics class or an ethics course before they're seated, you know, between November and January. And I'm sure that that ethics course will address those sorts of things. But I think everybody at this table, and these are all my opponents, and I hope you vote for me instead of them, but I am satisfied that all six of us are responsible people who will identify and understand when there's a conflict of interest and they would take appropriate action. Is that a red card? I can't see the lights. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kurt is exactly right. You can't vote anything that would be a personal step up, if you will, for yourself. You can't vote for something that's going to enhance you financially. So we have a lot of abstentions and things of that nature. By the same means, if you're voting on something and you have a relationship within the city, you have to abstain, leave the room. If it's a private meeting, you just can't have anything to do with that conversation. Thank you.
So if that's the law, then obviously you can't break the law. There's ethics there in place. I mean, ethics is out the window. You just can't do it. It'd be a violation. I own properties in Maumee and the surrounding area, and if I can't vote on it, I won't. But I think the problems with Maumee go beyond the rental ordinance. We need to address it and change it and work on it. And I think the community should push on their council for something if they don't want it or they do want it. That's up to you guys. But we have so many other things happening in Maumee right now that we need to address as council to fix, and that should be our focus. And if we can vote on it, then we will. But that would be my concern. How do we, how do we deal with the fire levy? How do we deal with traffic? How do we deal with all the other issues that we have in Maumee right now? And that will be the primary focus of my run on council.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm interpreting the question as to basically the rental ordinance and for those of us that are involved in real estate, should we abstain or not? Me personally, this is actually one of the reasons why I chose to step up and run for Maumee City Councils because I don't feel I have those conflicts of interest. So our properties, like I've said, are around the University of Toledo. They're in Toledo. So 99% of my business is in Toledo. I've sold one house in three years in Maumee. And so, yeah, so on those, you know, along those lines, you know, I don't feel I would have to abstain on voting on something regarding real estate. But I also echo everybody else that, yes, we're ethical. You know, we wouldn't be up here if we weren't. I mean, people, you know, can judge pretty quickly whether, you know, you're full of it or not. And I think everybody on this, everybody on this board is pretty on a darn straight and narrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. As you know, I've been on council before. I've taken the ethics training. I know all about when you have to abstain and when you don't have to abstain. And so as far as this particular ordinance, I own one rental house in Maumee. It is not my business. I have checked with my state representative and he has said I have no conflict of interest. But if the Ohio Ethics Board has another take on that, I would definitely follow the law and abstain. But as far as abstaining from a law that it should not, abstaining from any kind of emotion that would either hurt you or help you financially, that has nothing to do with it. It has to do with if it affects you personally. And again, this particular ordinance would not. But any other ordinance that I would have to vote on, I would abstain if I need to. And I've, don't think I've ever had to abstain before. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. As far as rental ordinance, I don't have to abstain because I don't own any property or I don't rent any property or, and I'm not a landlord, so I own one house and that's mine and I don't rent to anybody else. So, but as far as just abstaining from any type of vote overall, you know, since my years of council and serving on a variety of nonprofit and governmental boards, I know, I've taken ethics classes, I've taken sunshine law classes, I know what and how to abstain from certain votes. I had to do it with Tarda, with a Tarda vote because of my service on Timocog. So while I can't speak for anybody else up here, just know that I am always up on ethics laws, ethics information, and I will never, ever put myself in a conflict of interest or the city in a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Barrow. What do you think is the biggest challenge currently facing the city of Maumee?
Boy, you know, we've been fairly fortunate with all the new economic development we have, and I talk about that a lot, not just to beat the drum, but it's important. People honestly don't understand what it costs to live in Maumee. You talk to the people who are working and they want a tax to be spread around the block to everybody. Talk to somebody who's retired, they want the income tax to go up. It's hard to describe and tell people and explain to them, look, this is how much money we're getting, here's how much money we're spending. From 2005 to 2012, we ran a million dollar deficit straight for all those years. Since 2020 to present, we've had a positive in both our A and our B fund and we're shoring up our sewer service end of it where we're going to have money in the coffers as we move down the block. So that honestly, that's probably the most frustrating thing for me. I think we're doing great. We're business attractive. People are coming to our city. They want to hear, want to move to Maumee. They're excited. And we get that by all the different people coming. We have so much more to tell you what's coming to Maumee, but until they sign the development agreements, we can't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. What do you think is the biggest challenge currently facing the city of Maumee?
So we have a few challenges. I think solving the problem of our financial issues and finding new tax revenue. We've lost Mercy and we've lost Andersons. That's a big chunk of change for the city of Maumee. And I think we fix the problems and find those solutions by regaining the trust of our citizens first and foremost. I think we need less administrative control. I think we bring back citizen committees, as I've mentioned several times. And I think focus on business development. And I think one way to do that is to potentially bring in an economic development guy, someone who focuses specifically on economic development because one person can't do it all.
Thank you.
All right. So absolutely echo what Gabe and Aubrey just said, you know, nothing happens without money. But one thing that I've kind of really noticed over, especially, you know, campaigning and talking to tons of people these last few months, Maumee is at a crossroads. And our population has obviously declined a little bit. Maumee is getting older. And so I think we as a city right now, we have to figure out what are we going to do to help both the older generations and staying in Maumee, but also looking at the future. And so we have, you know, one of the questions I was asked at the Toledo interview for the Regional Chamber of Commerce, duh, was what do you want to do with the rec center? And so it's like, well, we obviously need more housing, but what housing is it going to be? You know, do we need to have more affordable places to live? Or do we want to continue to follow the Perrysburg-Sylvania track of higher property values, higher standards of living? And I think as council, we really need to listen to the people and see what we want to do.
Thank you.
Well, that's a loaded question and we have a lot of challenges, so it's really hard to pick out the biggest one. But I think we've pointed out here that Maumee needs to plan for the future, whether it's water, sewer, whether it's police and fire, whether it's economic development. We need to think future. We are raising our kids and our grandkids here. We want them to stay here. We need to do some planning for tomorrow. And maybe that's, well, what I would really like to do is resume the master plan committee. We had dozens of citizens that met with the city and council back in 2019 and we had some great ideas. And then COVID hit and it went shutdown. We're open back up for business, but have we resumed those meetings to get your input? No. And I want to do that. We need to get creative with our finances. And we also, we have hired an economic director, which is one step in the right direction, and we need to keep going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think the two biggest challenges that I've seen, you know, since campaigning in 2017, number one is having a 100% occupancy rate in all three of our business districts. Arrowhead Park District, the Parkway Plaza District, and Maumee Uptown Business Association. I think the Maumee Master Plan, as someone mentioned before, is a way of doing it. I think our current administration is doing a good job with having almost 100 businesses either reinvesting or establishing their operations here is a good way to do that. The second challenge that I think is, you know, helping our schools, you know, reinvigorate their student population so that they're full up. Because, you know, everybody knows, I don't have a wife, I don't have kids. So the way, the reason why I serve on council is to help the families like the Fiskus family, the Harris family, Puffin Burger family, 20 to 30-year-old families to come and establish our future in Maumee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly are a lot of challenges facing Maumee, especially the fire levy. But one challenge that has been brought to my attention by a lot of people is the fact that last May, we all remember this, last May, just a few months ago, McLaren came in and locked the doors at St. Luke's Hospital. We no longer have a community hospital. In a city our size, it's ridiculous. And that, that, Maumee is a casualty or collateral damage, whatever they call it in warfare. We are casualty of the big war, the hospital wars between ProMedica and Mercy. If I am elected, I am going to discuss with people, executives at other big health systems to come back and reopen St. Luke's Hospital. Not Mercy, I'm an alumnus of Mercy, but not Mercy, not ProMedica. We don't need to get involved in as collateral damage in another hospital war. I went through the hospital wars of the 1990s and I don't want to do it again.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Hornsby. How will you work with the city administrator, mayor, and fellow council members to best serve the city of Maumee and its residents?
So my understanding is we're going to have a new mayor next year. That's definitely going to happen. I think it's our job to communicate and work with each other every single day to focus on how we're going to improve and work on Maumee as a whole. That's our job on council. We're here to bring the voice of the community to the mayor, to the administrator, and discuss how we can get that job done as a community for you guys. So I think it's important that we all work together on a regular basis. I'm not sure when those meetings are, how often they happen, but I feel like it's a pretty easy question to answer to say that we're here to represent you guys and that's all we should be doing. And on council, we should figure out how to do that, whether it's with the mayor or the city administrator.
Thank you.
All right. So how do I plan on working with people? You have to be a team player. I mean, there's this, there's this no, there's no way around it. No one person is going to kick the door down and say, hey, I'm on council now. Here's what we're going to fix. No, it doesn't happen that way. Again, you know, I think there's a lot of different perspectives and different ideas sitting at this table right now. And for any business or organization to truly, you know, to truly work and to progress itself, there needs to be differing opinions. And so that's one thing that I definitely plan on doing is I will not be shy of offering my opinion. But like Aubrey said, you know, I am absolutely an open conduit to the community. If you, if you send me an email or if you give me a call, I am going to respond. And so that's just the biggest thing that, you know, I think we as a council have to do. Listen to the people and bring, you know, bring their opinions to the table. And then once we have those opinions, okay, now let's work with everybody. Let's work with the mayor, the administrator, the city, and get it done.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a proven track record for working collaboratively with the city mayor, the city administrator, and all council members. I am a firm believer that we need to have different opinions on things. Because through debate, respectful debate, and hearing out someone with a different opinion, we can all come together and collaborate to the best workable solution to a problem. Keep in mind, I would be one of seven. And that means that I would need to get other people on board. That is being a team member. You use collaboration, respectful debate, and compromise. And I have a great track record for that. And in fact, I am still on wonderful terms with the mayor, the city administrator, and council members to this day that still contact me. So obviously I did something right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. As far as working with the rest of council, the city administrator and the mayor, I can safely say that in my years of serving on council, I've been able to navigate, you know, disagreements and what have you in order to work with everybody, in order to push our city forward. Whether I fully agree with a particular element of an ordinance or the ordinance Whether I fully agree with a particular element of an ordinance or the ordinance overall or not. You know, for example, Councilmember Barrow's up here, you know, we might differ on certain things politically, but I've known, we've known each other for 25-plus years, and yet we've been able to navigate any disagreements or what have you, in order, because we are here to move the city forward. I think, you know, obviously, the effort is to, oh, someone also said that the six-and-one to seven-o votes are bad? I think that's an inaccurate statement, because what that shows to me is that our council and our administration is cohesive and efficient. And again, if reelected, I will maintain that going forward. Thank you.
Yeah, Peppelmeier, in his literature, he talks about being a coach for kids' teams and so forth. So the first thing that came out of his mouth, we have to be a team player, and he's exactly We need to, I've been going to meeting, city council meetings now for, I don't know, four, five, six months or so, and it seems to me that everybody is working cooperatively. Now, I don't know what goes on behind the closed doors of the executive sessions or so forth, but I'm reasonably satisfied that everybody is working together. And I will be, if I'm seated in January, if I'm seated on council, I will support that. I will be very courteous when it comes to, you know, working with other people. I'll be, I'm the courteous candidate, and I'll be the courteous council member. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barrow.
Yeah, thank you. Our council works extremely well together, as Councilman Noonan has said. We have quite a span of ages, political parties, and the best ingredients, what we have is the same common goal for the entire of Maumee. What's best for the future of Maumee, we are, you're a city council, we're working very hard every day. Decisions are not, the decisions we made are not based on how they might affect an individual or a particular business, but what's best for our city's future. Not everybody likes that, but we do what's best for the whole, not the individual. I have been on council for four years, and when I get a phone call or an email or a text, I make sure I go and speak to that resident. If we see council members have already responded in our city email, then I don't think they need five of the same or six of the same answers. I've called residents back, I've researched a lot of in-depth problems, our RAP problems, just all sorts of issues. Everybody has their own little issue, whether it's the sidewalk or their house getting flooded from our, you know, sewer systems, things of that nature, but I think it's important to work together, and it's great to have different opinions, and we speak a lot about different objectives. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Peppelmeier. How do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process?
All right, well, this is on you guys. So, as a city, we don't know what we don't know. And so it's very important for anyone to feel comfortable to send an email, and you can even do it through the city website. And so like, the very most basic, you know, contact us thing has, I've actually gotten things done just by simply emailing that about a tree limo hanging over our driveway. Three days later, bam, gone. It's like, that's pretty sweet. So, so when it comes to communicating, it's absolutely a two-way street. But at the same time, you know, when it comes to, when it comes to reaching out, you know, I would like the city to use more of a direct mail or postcard. Like I said, like the fire department did, I think we got it yesterday in the mail or something. So, yeah, so just, you know, it truly is, you know, town halls, it's just, you know, if the, if the community wants it, then I think we should do it. But if we have a few town hall meetings and five people show up, well, we can't fix that.
Thank you.
When I first started on council back in 2017, I, as a resident, wanted to know what was going on in the city, and I wanted to get that information to the residents, which is what inspired a lot of the actions that I did. And when council got rid of so many of the committees a couple of years ago, it took the citizens out of the process, and that really worried me. So we need to get those committees back on and advertise those meetings so that the citizens can be involved. We need to have community forums, we need to have more mailers mailed out with our water bills that say, this is what's going on. We need to have something in the mirror that says, visit the city website, because we've got some new FAQs out there, some new information of what's going on in your neighborhood. And we need to invite people to council meetings, and those that can't attend, livestream it, because that's an inclusive way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Noonan.
Thank you. I think obviously a variety of ways to involve the residents in the decision-making process. Obviously, the number one is to keep moving the Maumee master plan implementation going forward. Again, that's a key, key, key program to get community involvement into certain projects going forward. Number two, you know, there's a reason why, you know, obviously, you know, since I don't have a wife or kids, I have a lot of free time, and so I commit that to volunteering for all of the city type of events, or things that are happening within the city. And there's a reason for that, because in addition to offering my cell phone number, in addition to offering my email, and Facebook, or what have you, you know, I like to go out there and volunteer for as many things as I can, so that residents have the ability to see me in person and approach me about any issue that they have. You know, I can always try to solve all the problems, and I can't solve all the problems. I'm not a perfect human being, but thank you.
Thank you.
In order to get citizens involved, I think we need to do exactly what Tracy was talking about, restore some of these committees. And these aren't committees that just seven council members sit on, but citizen committees, you know, council members would be on the committees, and citizens would be on the committees. Town halls, like Dave was saying, if you don't show up to help cook the meal, you can't complain about how it tastes. And I think we need more people in the kitchen, not spoiling the broth, but we need more people in the kitchen participating in how this thing works, in how Maumee city government works. And I was looking at the city council minutes a couple of, a couple of days ago about some other issue, but in doing so, there were committee reports, every meeting, there were committee reports from this committee, that committee, and they're not doing that anymore on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We had a lot, we did have a lot of committees, and they weren't, they weren't being used, they weren't attended. We had a Buildings and Land Committee, we had a Code Committee, we now have, we now have an Environmental and Tree Committee, Advisory Committee, we have a Finance and Economic Development, Land and Use, zoning, a lot of these committees that were pushed away, these are very important, important aspects of the city, but you need to have people who are trained in that particular field. Somebody saying, I want to do this, and I want to do that, it's not productive in a meeting. I was chairman of the Public Information Meeting, and I think, other than the TARDI issue, we didn't have meetings, we just didn't have meetings because there wasn't a need or desire for it. So if there's a truly a need and desire, not just a slogan, transparency, we need to do this, we need to do that, we'd absolutely look at that. I think it's important, it's imperative. Our previous website wasn't conducive to information, it just didn't work, we had to redo the entire website, which is now up and running. As far as live streaming, we had a terrible system in place, it's 25 or 26 years old. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Oz.
So, I love talking and meeting new people, it drives my wife crazy. You can reach out to me anytime, I'm happy to talk to you. But again, this is a part of our agenda, it's live streaming, it's get ordinance info one to two weeks in advance, monthly and quarterly town hall meetings, and citizen committees. We need to find a way to communicate better with what we're trying to do and why. From my understanding, just putting out an ordinance that has a letter and a number next to it doesn't describe anything or explain anything to anyone. All it does is create confusion, and all that does is create anger. And going back to citizen committees, speaking of needs and desire, with talking to the community and meeting all of you, I see a need and a desire for a lot of different options out there. So we definitely need to bring back the right committees to help for the right issues.
Thank you. Okay. All right, Ms. Elmore.
Yes.
For purposes of county and state elections, Maumee is divided into nine precincts. However, council members in Maumee are elected at large. Depending upon the outcome of the election, six council members could be from just two precincts. Many communities the size of Maumee elect council members by precinct, which ensures fair representation, accountability, and responsiveness. Would you support an amendment to the city charter that would elect council members by precinct? Why or why not?
Good question. A city as big as Toledo obviously does have this option. When I was on council, I really didn't have a problem with responding to the problems of people in different precincts. However, if we want to have some community discussion on this, if you feel you're not being represented well by your council members, I would definitely consider something like that. I like to think that we're a small enough community where if I live on one part of town and you live on another part of town, that I would want to hear your concerns and definitely represent you. So I guess anything's up for discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Noonan.
Thank you. So I think, and forgive me if I'm wrong, I think the question is, would I support the city of kind of being broken up into districts? Is that right?
The question, do you want me to read?
I'm sorry, yes.
No, that's fine. Okay. For purposes of county and state elections, Maumee is divided into nine precincts. However, council members in Maumee are elected at large. Depending upon the outcome of the election, six council members could be from just two of those precincts. Many communities the size of Maumee elect council members by precinct, which ensures fair representation, accountability, and responsiveness. Would you support an amendment to the city charter that would elect council members by precinct? Why or why not?
Thank you for repeating that question. I apologize for releasing anybody's name for that. So I think that's a, that's a very loaded question, because, you know, I think our community with 14,000 people, I think it's, is small enough and intimate enough for all of those concerns to be shared. I will say, in looking at places like the city of Toledo and other municipalities throughout the state that have, you know, districts, the, while those districts are represented, the problem is, is when you get approached by a citywide issue, sometimes the district representation supersedes the city at whole. So I think there are some concerns with that, from my perspective, just again, we want to keep that cohesiveness and efficiency within city government, so, but again, I think we are small and intimate enough for all of the citizens' concerns to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think it's necessary. I would not support that, I would not recommend it. I just don't think it's necessary. Maumee is small enough, we don't have, you know, non-aligned interests, you know, maybe East Toledo's interests might differ from people in the Old West End. I get that, I understand that, but we don't have many area, I don't think we have any areas where our interests are not aligned. So I don't think it's necessary at all to, to elect council members by precinct. I think we're fine just the way they are, the way we are.
Thank you. Mr. Barrow.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I would say no, and I don't like that idea, because I think you need to appeal to the whole mass, the whole city. It's a small enough society that you can do that. It reminds me of, we used to watch the national campaigning, on the East Coast, they'd tell them this, the West Coast, they told them that, whatever is needed to hear, they tell them. So I wouldn't be an advocate of that. You're kind of just, you know, looking out for your own interests, I think, in my district, I want to do this, and here's what we want to do. This person over here wants to do this for their district. You have to look at the whole picture of Maumee. Like I said earlier, you know, what decisions we make, you may not like it, but we do it for everybody in the city. We want to, we want to make sure it seems, it is fair, rather, for everybody to get this, take the same medicine, if you will. And I think that's, cohesiveness is by doing it the way we're doing it currently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this is not an issue I have heard from anyone, but we're bringing it up tonight, so I honestly can't pretend to have an answer to this, but I'll stand by what I've said from the beginning. I am willing to work on anything that the community as a whole has, needs a solution to. For example, I don't have a problem with rats in my yard, but I understand a lot of people are concerned about that, so we need to find a solution to that. But again, I would have to do some more work and find, and talk to some more people before I could work on a solution to that.
Thank you.
All right. And so I echo Aubrey's statement that this is the first I've heard that this might be a concern, but hey, if it's a, if it's a concern of a significant amount of people, let's talk about it. Me personally, just being dropped on this right now, I agree with Gabe, I don't think that we really need to, I think we're a small enough community. And the other question raised is, is there's six of us up here right now, what if one year, no one in a precinct wants to run for this? I mean, a lot of people have told me, I'm glad you're doing it, not me. So, so yeah, so I think we're small enough, I think, you know, we're all interested in Maumee as a whole, it doesn't matter if you live on the east side of Conan or the west side of Conan, or on Richland, or wherever.
Thank you. All right, back to Mr. Noonan. All right, Scott. Should you be elected to city council, what will be your highest priority and why?
Again, I think the highest priority, and it's kind of the same response that I have with the biggest challenge that I, one of the biggest challenges that we answered earlier. You know, for me, the biggest priority is to occupy, getting all three of our business districts occupied, because with Andersons leaving, or receiving, when Andersons left, and now Mercy leaving, you know, occupying all three of those business districts, getting all those vacant properties filled in by current businesses or, you know, current businesses either relocating or establishing new operations is critical, I think, for the betterment of the city of Maumee. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I think everybody on this panel has said this already, but I think a high, a major priority I would advance would be, again, I use the A word, accountability and transparency. I'm sick of hearing about accountability and transparency, yet I advocate it myself. Somehow get the citizens of Maumee involved, that would be a priority, as far as I'm concerned. It's not a substantive priority like Conan Street or, or the water sewage issue and so forth, but my priority would get all of you and everyone else who isn't here tonight somehow involved, whether it's through committees, whether it's enabling you to watch the meetings through live stream. But that would be my priority, to restore or at least maintain transparency and accountability so all of you know what's going on at city hall.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think continuing our economic development is very important. With all this new business coming here, our tax base is going up, we have a lot of new people, a lot of new businesses and people and residents coming to Maumee to live. I think that's important. I heard live streaming a lot, and like I said, we've been working on this for a while. The city hall, city council chambers, lights have been refurbished, I believe, by the pile of lights I saw outside today, we're updating the cameras. And I think if people want to find out the information, we're trying to make it as easy as possible, but I'll talk to people in my age bracket, seniors, go seniors, and they say, well, I don't get on Facebook, and I don't get on the computer, well, do you get the mirror? No, I don't get that. Okay, so, so there's mailings, you know, so there's a lot of different facets of communication and transparency. Transparency is a big topic this election, I understand it, and I think it's important. As far as accountability goes, everything's done in open meetings, we've heard otherwise accusing us of doing things behind closed doors, which is not really right or truthful or very nice to say, but we don't, we do everything that we're supposed to do at the time given. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, again, I think we got to solve the problem of any future financial issues, financial issues and the current ones that we have, we got to find new tax- We got to find new tax revenue. I have some real concerns about the EPA violation and what that might cost us as a community. But, you know, backing up a little bit, I think we need to regain the trust of the citizens, less administrative control, bring back citizen committees, and business development are essential to helping us move forward as a community and help save our pockets as well.
Thank you.
So right now, and obviously, you know, communication and economics are the two big things that we keep hearing about. So me personally, I think the easiest thing that I could do is, again, just helping communicate. Like I've mentioned, you know, I want to definitely jump in and help out with business attraction, economic development. But at the same time, maybe if I'm elected on council and I kind of get, you know, behind the scenes, there might be something else that I see that is like, hey, I see a problem here, and maybe I'm the one to jump on that. I am totally fine with that. So, yeah, there's that.
Other than planning for Maumee's successful and safe future through budgeting and economic development, I think that the highest priority, which would be the one that I would want to address first, would be the healing that we need here in the city. There's always going to be construction and different opinions on the cost of living and complaints and divisions, but I believe that we are ready to be brought together, and we need to foster an atmosphere of cohesiveness, because that's essential to us moving forward. There's apparent mistrust and disconnect that currently exists in Maumee, and this has to be addressed. It will not completely stop the drama and the misinformation generated by a few who enjoy the attention, but it will take a concerted effort by those on council and city staff to counter with information engagement, and if I am elected, I will do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Pardon me? Yeah, we'll...
Should I ask? I think you should.
All right. The League is saying we need to ask. We have one audience question. We're going to give it a shot. Who's turn? Who's next? All right. Mr. Kurt.
Yes.
This would be for, you're going to start with this. This is from an audience member. How are we going to restore emergency services north of railroad?
Restore emergency services north of...
The railroad. North of the railroad.
The railroad tracks by Autozone? I'm sorry, I don't...
I don't either.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Do you have another question?
Unless they're talking about the loss of the emergency room at St. Luke's, if that's the basis of the question, Promedica already has an emergency facility on the trail there, on the Toledo Clinic campus. I would like to see an emergency room restored at St. Luke's with not necessarily 300 beds upstairs, but, you know, some inpatient services where an emergency, a patient who needs to be admitted can be admitted by getting in an elevator, and not be admitted by getting in an ambulance and going to MCO or over to Perrysburg to one of the hospitals over there. If that's what the audience person is talking about, that's my answer, but Gabe might, and for a different meaning, have a different answer. I don't know.
Now, I'm going to take it, and that's the question, because we could be here all night before we figure it out. I love St. Luke's. I grew up in their ER. I did the towpath project. I was back there like, you know, several visits. Yeah, it's not for obvious reasons, but things always happen. I think this was a financial move, that they moved out, and they're not, it's hard to talk to them about selling property. There's been conversations for the past several weeks and still are ongoing, and we're trying to convince the people who made that decision to change their mind, to do something. But it's high stakes poker. So, yeah, I absolutely would love another spot for a hospital. We have a lot of land in Maumee we have out by Fallen Timbers. We have a lot, I think. We still have some choices to look at. Again, the rec center, who knows what could happen with that, but when those things come or presented to us, then we could, you know, see what could be done with that time. Thank you, at that time.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate the question. I'm a little confused as well, but I think we're all leaning towards the development of St. Luke's. And yeah, I think that is a huge loss to our tax dollars here in Maumee, and we got to find a way to bring another hospital to that location, whether it's Mercy or another option. We got to do our due diligence to make sure it's the right fit. But I also agree that we have potential for development at Detroit and the Trail. We have the potential for development around Savage, and we have potential in Arrowhead as well. So we got to look at the real opportunities we have out there and find ways to bring people to Maumee that want to develop. Hope that answers your question.
I'm just going to echo what everybody else has said. I'm sorry, I don't understand the question, but when it comes to, again, from my career in healthcare, you know, could Maumee support, you know, a hospital? I'm going to be honest, I would love to see one here again, but there needs to be a lot of homework done on whether it's going to be viable. I mean, St. Luke's tried to stand on its own, and unfortunately, in the healthcare environment, you either get big or you get eaten. And so that's where, you know, when Promedica came in, I know, you know, Big Green Monopoly, I know, but it was a solid company behind that hospital. And so I was kind of sad to see that they were forced to divest that. And then, again, I saw the writing on the wall for a long time, and some grutter came in, they're not from the area. It didn't work. And so, yeah, Toledo has a lot of hospitals, and we are, you know, as a metro area, not a huge population. So if that does happen, we need to make sure it works.
I'll follow the question as it leads to the St. Luke's property. I believe we can get creative as a city. We can attract some high-paying jobs to that area, whether it's a hospital, or a medical facility, or a school, or a testing facility. I believe there may be an option to maybe attract Nationwide Children's Hospital here. It's located in a wonderful area where we have lots of highways intersecting, and we're right between Columbus and Ann Arbor. I think it would be a great place for Maumee to attract somebody there. Again, the income tax is really important, and we need to attract high-paying jobs. Not your $15-an-hour jobs, but your six-figure jobs, and medical is where it's at. That's where my background has been at, with physicians and hospitals, and I know that that area is prime for that type of facility. So I think the city has a ripe opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Noonan.
Thank you. I kind of agree, I mean, we have, we do have, kind of, everybody here, we have the Promedica site, but I do agree that it's, the services there probably is not conducive with just the Maumee area, and then obviously the surrounding areas that are increasing population, namely Montlova Township. So I think we have to obviously look for other avenues, and that's obviously with working with the current administration and the new mayor, and seeking out those hospital entities that are throughout the country to see if we can, you know, establish something locally, looking out nationally to see what our options are in order to recruit a new location to reestablish those emergency services, so not only the city of Maumee, but the neighboring communities can get those healthcare needs provided for. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we are ready for closing statements. You've made it through the question portion of this, and I have been asked too by some media if you could also stick around a little bit. They want to get your contact information, so make sure that you give that. Okay, so we're going to start with our closing statements, and Mr. Barrow, you will lead us off.
Thank you very much. We are a rejuvenated city. We have brought in more business in the past four years than the previous 25. Council has created a city with a beautiful uptown, which businesses are coming to. We work very hard, we work very extremely well together, entire council. Like I said earlier, we have a great diversity of party affiliations and ages, and everything is going quite well. Would you be surprised to know that 25% of our population is under the age of five? What does this tell you? That the people are not leaving Maumee, like some of the candidates are advertising, but they're moving to Maumee. They're moving to Maumee because this is where they want to raise their families. One of the most important jobs for council, for my belief, one of the most important jobs we have is for the functioning of being on council, is to do economic development, pay the bills, attract businesses and income. And that's what we have done. We have so much more coming to Maumee that it's going to just be, it's going to be better for us, as Ms. Elmore said, it's all about income tax. We're a city where it all came together for our residents. You can live, work, and play. I've talked to so many people, this is what they want to do. They want to work in a city, live in a city, and play in the city within a five-minute walk of their house. Me, I have to walk further. And I want to just clarify one thing, and this has been repeated over and over again. And this ordinance has been misrepresented time and time again. It says you can walk into somebody's house unannounced and do an inspection. That's not true. It's not in the ordinance. It's against the Fourth Amendment right, and I'm just tired of hearing that being repeated over and over again. Vote for Gabe Barrow, November 7th. I will represent everybody in this community fairly. Thank you.
All right, this has been a long day, so I want to keep it short. First, I want to thank all of you for attending tonight. I don't know how you feel about it, but it's an experience for us. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. I appreciate your time. Thank you to the Mirror, and thank you for the Chamber. Like I said, let's keep this simple. So I'm running to not be another yes man. I want to get in there and be the voice of the people, and if that means not saying yes to everything, that's my intention. I feel that if another levy or tax is going to be passed, I want to make sure I have all the information, I've done all the research, and you guys understand everything that's happened before that levy or ordinance or whatever it is passes. It is our job to represent you first and foremost. Whatever your concerns are, those are my concerns. So again, I'm running for council to help be a person that represents you, brings a voice back to the council, and does what I can to improve Maumee and make it what it is and make it greater. Thank you.
All right, so yes, I didn't get a chance to do it in the intro, but again, thank you, League of Women Voters. Thank you to the Chamber. Thanks to the Mirror. And thank you for coming out. And honestly, I did not know what to expect tonight. I didn't know if there was going to be three people here, 300, but I thank you for coming out and participating in the electoral process. And again, just, you know, to reiterate, I started this journey because, you know, I wasn't happy with how the rental ordinance, besides the ordinance itself, just wasn't happy with the way that it went down. And I just don't think that, you know, me and others in the real estate community were listened to, and that's, you know, that's what was my springboard into this. But I have grown into knowing that this isn't just about an issue, and it never really was about an issue. But, you know, it's more complicated than 12th grade civics, but I truly want to be a part of this community. I want to be a part of city council, and I want to be a part of your input into that council. And nothing, nothing really happens without you. And so I guess, again, like I said before, my challenge to the citizens of Maumee is like Ted said, if you don't help make dinner, you're not going to cook taste well. He said a lot better night in. But, yes, he's absolutely right. And so that's one of the biggest things I want to do, is I want to help be your voice. I'm not afraid to be the squeaky wheel. I'm not going to be a jerk and kicking the door, like I said earlier, but, you know, I will bring different opinions. And, you know, there might be things I might not agree on, and that's okay. Like I said, we need, you know, we need different opinions, and at the end of the day, the vote is the vote, and life goes on. But, yeah, thank you for coming out.
You've taken in a lot of information tonight, and now it's up to you to decipher what you've heard and to vote. Raymond Lindquist said, "Courage is the power to let go of the familiar." There are several things that have worked for Maumee for years, decades even, but we must have the courage to constantly explore alternatives and make sure that the decisions we make today are the best way to prepare for the future. And the best way to gauge this is through citizen involvement and input. Disagreements aren't a bad thing, but rather a way to arrive at the best workable solutions for everyone through respectful debate and the sharing of ideas. It is when the debate is shut down or avoided that government fails in its role to properly govern the people. And I have never shied away from having hard conversations, and I promise to stay open and listen when they happen. I want to take this opportunity to thank my family for standing with me through this journey, for the many friends that have worked tirelessly on my behalf distributing signs and literature and offering those words of encouragement, and the many citizens and city staff who have motivated me to run again and support what I have to offer. Without them, I would not be here today, literally. I invite you to, all to my meet and greet spaghetti dinner at Dino's Restaurant next Wednesday, the 18th, at 5:30 for a fun and informative time together, and we can pick up where we left off tonight. But I leave you tonight with my pledge to carefully consider every decision I am faced with, be honest in my thoughts and actions, work diligently and respectfully with other members of council and the administration, and always remain available and approachable to you, the citizens, business owners, and workers in my hometown, Maumee. Thank you for your vote of confidence on November 7th. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters, the Maumee Chamber of Commerce, Maumee Uptown Business Association, and the Maumee Mirror for their efforts in organizing this forum, and I thank everyone attending here, hearing all the candidates tonight. Based on what you have heard tonight, I hope I provided the impression that I offered specific responses and detailed solutions. In addition to official business and what I have offered tonight, I believe that I am a positive representative for Maumee internally and externally. In addition to the board of commissions that I provided to you tonight, I also serve on the Toledo Police Athletic League, the old news, and the old newsboys. I have also dedicated my time and efforts in volunteering for Maumee-specific events, such as the Maumee Summer Fair, the fireworks event this past July, accused us for autism, and I make it a point to attend every Maumee Chamber of Commerce ribbon cutting to celebrate grand openings and reopenings of businesses. I have also literally bled and sweat for the city while assisting with the towpath beautification project or helping to simply spray paint the fence surrounding our memorial. In conclusion, I have, and will always strive to work towards the betterment of the city of Maumee and its 14,000 residents. Throughout my service, I try to respect the past, honor the present, and prepare for the future. My name is Scott Noonan, and I ask for your support on November 7th. Thank you.
Before I forget, on the way home, if I don't thank my wife, Mary, for all of her help in this, well, Tracy thanked her family, why didn't you thank me? I don't know where you are, the lights. Thanks, Mary. I literally wouldn't be here because she drove me, so. I, this has been an incredible experience. Win or lose, it's been an incredible experience, and I've had a lot of incredible experiences in my life. I'm almost 40 years old, but I've done a lot in my 40 years. I've been calling myself the candidate, the councilman who won't be afraid to ask the tough questions, and I won't be. I'm going to be, a lot of you remember Bellner, John Bellner, JB, was on council until he got sick and wasn't able to run again. JB was not afraid to ask the tough questions. And I'm going to, if I'm seated in January, I'm going to, I mean, you see these bracelets, what would Jesus do? I'm going to, I'm going to do, I'm going to be, what would Bellner do? WWBD, what would Bellner do? Ask the tough questions, but I'll do it in a way, in a manner that's, and I hope fellow St. John's graduates don't take offense at this, in a manner expressed by the motto of St. Francis High School, St. Francis de Sales High School, suaviter at fortiter, firmly but with courtesy. And that's the way I'll handle myself on council. I'll ask the tough questions, but I'll do it in a courteous manner. And if you're looking for my contact information, I have the coolest email on the entire internet. It's www...
It's www.tedkurt.com. Easy to remember. And it has all my, my contact information, my CV, all sorts of stuff on there, even a picture of my son's dog. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you to our candidates, and we have one more person that's going to come up and share with us. Jim McDonald, who is running for mayor.